All right, we're just gonna go ahead and start. Thank you for coming to the study session, everybody. First, we're gonna have a demographic update. All right, Ms. Berry, could you introduce everybody?
Absolutely. Mr. President, members of the board, we're really lucky tonight. We have Rick Bramer on with us tonight from Applied Economics. I was just talking to Rick because I've been here 10 years. This is my 11th year in the school district. But before that, Rick has been doing our Applied Economic, or our Demographer Report, I think, for about two decades. Joel actually started that, and so did Jeanette Plavani before me. I got handed off a report from Jeanette, and then I was able to connect with Rick when I first started here. So, we've been using them for two decades. They're our external demographer. We inside, we also do a lot of our own reports. Dr. Fletcher now has taken that over in the sense of helping us with that, with our programmers. Before that, we had internal staff. So, we do it internally, but we also rely on the reports from outside to verify that and to help guide us as we're making enrollment projections. But tonight, I'm gonna have Rick go over, Mr. Bramer go over, the Demographer Report that was put together. He completed it in June this year. There are some changes as we've started school, obviously, but it's a great report. I think that you'll find it interesting, plus kind of help you understand where we're going in the future. And then, there'll be a time to answer questions. Mr. Bramer will be able to answer that, but so will I, also, as we go forward. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Rick. He is great. He's a huge, he does a ton, I wanted to say that, too, across the state of Arizona. He's kind of known as the guru to the Demographer Reports for K-12 education. So, I'm gonna turn over to Rick. Thank you.
Thank you, Lena. I appreciate being here tonight. President Olive, Vice President Mosden, Mosden, how did I say that?
Masden.
Masden, sorry about that. Mr. Narducci, I have a hard time with names, as you can tell. I wrap my name all around those, but are pleased to be here tonight. And we are, have been privileged to serve the district off and on over a long period of time. And some districts we serve every year. Yours isn't one of those because you do have a great in-house team as well. So, we just come in every few years, every couple of years, and see how we're tracking and look at some of the bigger things, particularly with respect to the demographic and some of the development aspects that maybe we could assist the staff just a little bit with. And so, we'll go to the scope of work that we've been doing, which hasn't changed an awful lot over the last 20 years, but obviously, a thorough analysis of all of the enrollment data that we can get, certainly not just district totals, but school totals, and then actually individual student records, just a directory information. But we actually have an X-Y coordinate for every student, so we can relay them to their neighborhood and actually do then neighborhood-level analysis. So, the geographic distribution of students, which means students in your district and students coming to you from outside of your district. And then, of course, now doing projections, it's all about, you know, how the alternative providers, charters and private schools primarily, are performing in your district and what that's doing to your enrollment. So, a lot of analysis there. Obviously, this is a very established community at this point, and so the demographic characteristics of the people who are already here are very important. We've kind of gotten beyond the pure growth mode, where we're just seeing who's coming in the door, and the number gets bigger every year, and so nobody pays too much attention to it. And now, we have to look at the age structure, the tenure of the population, owner versus renter, and how fast those housing units are turning over, or in our case, a lot of times, not turning over. Don Graves with our office is a residential development expert. He talks to the builders and developers and the planners and does, you know, put production rates at a very detailed level in terms of type of unit, so that we can predict how many students we might get out of those. A good example of that right now is all the new multifamily that's going in, where you see tons and tons and tons of units going up, and we don't see tons and tons of kids coming in terms of enrollment. So, we have to separate those two things. So, Don's doing all of that work for us. And then, we do do two sets of enrollment projections. There's a macroeconomic top-down, how does Chandler fit into the Southeast Valley and into what's going on in metro Phoenix, you know, basically mega trends. And then, also, you go forward one, I think, oh, we don't have it here, the sub-district level projections, where we're actually doing projections by grid. You're probably familiar with the grid system the district has. It divides the district into quarter sections, so there's about 400 geographies that we're actually modeling. So, it's top-down and bottom-up. The bottom-up one is so powerful because then you can see where each neighborhood is instead of where just the district is. And that's where we get into, this one's increasing and this one's decreasing, and the net total might be zero, or it might be, you know, not only does it not then affect the total, it does affect the distribution, which is a challenge for us because our available classrooms may not be in the right places. So, starting back at the top, you just want to give me one more click. You can see the long-term history. What we use for our work is 40th-day head count numbers, so this will vary a little bit from what you may see in terms of ADM or what have you. It does come from the student-based data, which is also slightly different than some of the counts from the district. So, for instance, last year's total of 22, oh, sorry, 43,394, that's about 300 more, I think, than I saw in a district report. But it's just because of the student data I get, but it's always done exactly apples to apples on the 40th day. And so, what you can see that, you know, between 2000 and 2010, the district grew, you know, dramatically by some 16,700 students, and then, you know, by another 7300 students through 19, there's just one more click here, through 1920, and then COVID. And, you know, the big surprise to COVID for everyone was not so much the initial impact, the loss of right around 2,000 students, it was the fact that we really didn't see a lot of them come back. It wasn't obviously exactly the same people, but in net terms, there was no bounce-back in this district. The enrollment continued to be down by that 2,000 students.
Rick, you know, I remember hearing a really good point, too, that you said that in districts with high socioeconomic status, that there was, we didn't, you didn't see the return versus districts with lower economic status. Is that correct, too?
That's exactly correct. And so, what we have seen across the valley, and I was gonna get to that a little bit later, but it's okay, is that choice requires resources. It requires knowledge of the choice, and it requires the ability to take advantage of the choice. And so, what we saw was that in lower socioeconomic districts, most of the students came back the following year. And in here, and in Gilbert, and in Paradise Valley, they did not. It generally was the same story. Scottsdale, they did not. It was generally the same story right across the board. So, yeah, I had forgotten that point, but thank you. So, we'll go on to the next one, where we talk about how the enrollment is structured by grade level, and not individual grade levels, but actually in groups. So, the average enrollment per grade in each one of these cohorts or groups, K-2, 3, 5, 6, 8. And it's kind of a fascinating story, actually, because you're very typical in that when you have fast growth, when families were really moving in back in the 2000s, the biggest group is K-2. Young families move in, they lead the way in the terms of the enrollment growth. And then, as soon, but you see, the K-2 actually peaked clear back in 2008, 2009. And the 3, 5 group actually continued to grow, albeit at a very low rate, but all the way through 2016. That's a long time for that, you know, sort of lag. Charter schools started out by taking nothing but, well, primarily young students. And so, we saw the impact on the lower grades earlier, and it took a while to move up. At the same time, the housing prices and availability of affordable housing in the district was eroding. And so, what was happening is that even as houses were turning over or even being built, you weren't getting the younger-age buyer in with the smaller kids. And so, we started to see this gap widening between the enrollment per grade, K-2, 3, 5, 6, 8, 9, 12, pretty much all the way up. The only other thing is that these curves definitely do follow each other. You see that the 3, 5 group peaked in about 2017. Three years later, the 6, 8 group has now peaked. And three years, four years after that, guess what? The high school group has now peaked. So, they definitely chase after each other, but there'll probably be a permanent distribution like this, where the upper grades are larger than the lower grades, simply because of the desirability and the cost of housing in the district. And that's normal. What's also normal is the pattern, the life cycle that districts go through. And this shows enrollment curves for the last dozen or so years for a lot of districts, most of them in the Southeast Valley. And the point to be taken here is that Mesa, which other than, you know, some areas in the Extreme East, has been developed for many, many years. And with the demographic pressure and the pressure from charter schools, their enrollment has fallen from the mid-60,000s into about 56,000, 57,000. So, they've experienced these declines. Interestingly, you have this group in the middle that includes Chandler, Gilbert, Tempe Union, and Peoria. And I'll tell you why I threw Peoria in there in the middle, but you go back to 2010, and they were all just about exactly the same size, but they were in different, you know, stages of their lives, if you will. Gilbert and Temple are basically already built-out areas in terms of really, you know, any kind of production housing. And so, their enrollment has continued, has declined at a steady rate, while in fact, Chandler has continued to grow as, you know, land was still available for development. But just like the cycle that everyone goes through, once that rate of development starts to slow, the age structure shifts and you begin to decline. So, it's the pattern that we see across the board, other than in places right now where, like Queen Creek, which being much smaller, but the pink line down here is one of the, you know, few places that we've actually seen, you know, some substantial growth. But that's because they're in the first part of their life cycle. So, you're just entering a very mature phase, and the turnover rate, and as I said, the existing impact of the, or the characteristics of the existing population being so important to the enrollment numbers. Another thing that we want to make, you know, clear, that everyone's been facing, a little bit of the, obviously, demographic shift, but also the share of these, of the, at least public enrollment that's being served by districts versus charters. And so, this shows that numbers, the red bars being the students enrolled in districts, the blue bar being the students enrolled in charter schools, the green being the ratio enrolled in charter schools. So that you can see that, you know, from about 2000 through 2022, the, you know, the share of students in charter schools has gone from 6% to over 22%, or about 21%. I apologize. And since 2010, which is kind of the period we're focused on, it's still gone, almost doubled from 12% to about 21%. The most interesting thing for me, actually, is, well, all of that, but the last bar, 22, 23, where charter schools only gained 8,000, and district schools eked out a couple of thousand, and we know the school-age population went up by a lot more than that. But between 21, 22, and 22, 23, the number of ESAs went from 9,000 to 49,000. Now, we know that 80% of those ESAs were given, or somewhere between 75 and 80%, were given to students who were already in private schools. So, the, you know, the total impact wasn't 49,000. But, the fact that charters didn't grow either, to me, is the first indication of the impact of ESAs, not only just on district schools, but also now on charter schools. So, it's a, it's a very interesting, you know, phenomenon for me to, you know, to see their growth actually now kind of in jeopardy, at least, at least in the near term. One of the good things about all the student movement is, it's a measurement of how good you are, but Chandler does very well. So, we talk about, you know, enrollment versus school-age population and who's serving who. The district does bring in 6,100 or so students from outside of the district, 14.1% of the total, that was last year. It's not the highest percentage that we see, but it is one of the highest numerical numbers in terms of, you know, 6,000 bodies coming into the district. The only other one that's close would be Peoria, interestingly, that is probably right in that ballpark. But, but we, but we know that, too, so we can look at how many kids are coming out of our own neighborhoods, but also look at the distribution of where kids are coming from outside. Mr. Worth.
Is Peoria growing?
See, I should back up if we can. Put it on there for that reason, because they were growing, not a lot, never at the rate you guys were, but they were plugging along, growing, and since interest rates went up, they have actually fallen.
They've what?
They have fallen the last two years in a row, which is not gonna be a permanent situation for them. There's thousands of acres yet to be built in the Peoria School District. It's just that construction has slowed, especially new home construction, especially the type of construction they had. So, it's, it's set them back a bit, plus which, they've also had new charters open. So, that's a really good question, though. What we do, this kind of shows the geography that we're modeling, these little boxes. We call them grids, kind of affectionately, but this map just shows you how many students the Chandler Unified School District serves from each one of these quarter-square-mile areas. So, that's K-12 total, and it just shows you where the high and low density points are. And this obviously is real important when we're looking at facility decisions and attendance area planning and that kind of thing. But the one that's more important to me is that we've been doing it long enough for you guys that we have a history, and we can see, again, at the neighborhood level, where increases and decreases are taking place. So, everywhere that's blue on this map represented a decline in enrollment, you know, for, for the Chandler Unified School District, there have been other providers, but your enrollment out of those grids fell, whereas in the, in the red areas, you can see increases, and they're generally correlated towards newer developing neighborhoods, where you get any kind of an increase at all. And a lot of it, again, is part demographics and it's part charter, you know, competition. Demographics aren't exactly doing us any favors, either. The district experienced, you know, a huge population increase during the 2000s. I don't even show that period in percentages, but, you know, going from 135,000 people to 220,000 people in a single decade. Mr. Worth knows what that meant in terms of schools and construction and all that, probably better than anybody else in this room, but what's been happening, though, under the hood is that the share of the population, I use the population, the preschool population, 04, 5 to 13 is the elementary population, that's what's going to primarily drive the future. So, you can see that as the total population has continued to increase, the share of population that goes in, that's, it's in those categories, has fallen pretty significantly, from 22.5% down to 18%. If you look at the overall growth, particularly in the last period, where the overall was 1.4% annual growth in population overall. But all of the categories, particularly the under 4 and the elementaries, actually had negative. They lost, net lost, population. So, not only did their percentages fall, the percentages were enough to cause, actually to decline. So, you would have an enrollment decline in this district, even if you didn't have any competition. That's just the part of the cycle, and that's, that's the demographic condition we're in. But a lot of it is exacerbated by the fact that we want elementary enrollment depends on householders 25 to 34 and 35 to 44. That's where those kiddos come from. And that's fallen from, you know, nearly half of all the households in the district to a third during this period of time. And that's, you know, that's ultimately why there isn't more school-age kids.
You're saying, again, in other words, you're saying that communities are aging.
Back up.
Is that what you're saying?
I'm sorry.
Are you saying the communities are aging? Is that what you're saying to me?
I'm saying that all the established areas are aging, and you'll see in a minute that our birth rates have been so low that we're just aging, you know, basically statewide. And to that end, the only places that we're seeing any increases in enrollment at the elementary level are places like Maricopa and Buckeye, where they can still, you know, build a house for 300 or $350,000. Otherwise, you're losing elementary enrollment right now, no matter who you are.
What about San Tan Valley?
What's that?
What about San Tan Valley? Is that growing?
San Tan Valley is an interesting place in that they, they're, they have a little bit of enrollment growth, but the thing is that they lose so many students to Queen Creek and to Higley, and quite honestly, to you guys, you know, that people are commuting with their kids at such a rate that it's really offset a lot of their growth. And the poster child, I guess, I mean, for better for worse, is the, you know, the J.L. Combs District, where they now serve less than half of the students who live in that district, even though they have, you know, they, in my opinion, have good schools right there in their own community. One of the things that's been driving us all, and I know this is a complicated chart, I won't spend too long, I promise, but the red line is the birth rate in Arizona, one more click, that fell during the Great Recession by about 18%. And what that meant, or not almost 19%, is that during that one period of time, the number of births in the state, statewide, fell from 102,000 to 85,000. And the resulting birth rate was the lowest in Arizona history at that point. Once the recession ended, we had about three years where it was more or less stable, and typically, what's happened in U.S. history after a big recession is that people will, okay, now we'll have the kid, you know, and you'll see birth rates actually kind of respond upwards. But the exact opposite happened. The recession was so extreme, so people were, young people were left with a lot of debt. They were left with a lot of concern about the future, and they decided, we're not having kids. So, the average age of first birth went up by five years in a space of about 12 years. And people just push the decision back. For you push the decision back, the fewer total kids you will have. And in the meantime, you get a gap. So, what's happened after that little recovery period is it's fallen again. And so, now, we're down at 76,000 births. So, just think about that. In 16 years, we're actually down what amounts to 25 or 30% in terms of the actual number of births in the state. And I actually have acquaintances who are pediatrics, and they say, oh, that makes sense, why all of the, you know, hospitals have pulled back on the size of their maternity wards. I mean, this is just the part of the population that we're, that we're in. The only saving grace is, we saw the last year, last couple of years, at least the number of births, at least the birth, actually, the birth rate went flat. Number of births has basically gone flat. So, maybe there's a, maybe there's light at the end of the tunnel in terms of the birth rate issue, at least. We talked about alternative providers, and it's awfully hard to know who's, who's got who. There is a new report out from the state, I'll get back to in just a moment, but the way we've been doing it up till now is by looking at all the charter schools that operate in the district or within one mile, because across the street is as good as in, so we just do a mile. And so, you can see that enrollment in those charter schools has gone from, you know, 4,500 or so in 2010, up to, you know, around 11,000. So, it's, you know, it's not hard to figure out why enrollment in the district may have been, didn't fall, but it never grew as much as it would have if they had not been having, you know, that kind of an increase during this period of time. Very interestingly, they had a minor bump up in the COVID year. A lot of us thought, you know, they were, originally, that kids were disappearing to charters for COVID, but what happens is they didn't. Charter schools operate at such a high level of utilization, they really didn't have a lot of seats. So, charter school enrollment really didn't increase statewide all that much that year, in this district only by 60. And so, what you see happen the last two years is they're actually losing students, too, whether, you know, whether it's ESAs and/or demographics, but it's the exact same challenges that are facing you have now caught up with this area, which is no longer a growth area. All right, Don's gonna talk about something different. Talk about some housing.
When you see on the, this chart, the blue bars indicate single-family, and the orange bars is multifamily. As you can see, this is a mature district as far as housing is concerned. So, you're gonna have an increase in the multifamily market.
You may have to get a little bit closer to the mic so we can hear everything.
Okay. So, about 40, so about 40% of the, of the housing in the last 10 years has been multifamily, and we can expect that to continue, because like I said, you know, you have a mature market with not a lot of vacant land available for new construction. And what vacant land there is, in a lot of cases, it's very small parcels, it's kind of lends itself to multifamily and particularly the single-family rentals that are real popular these days.
Before we get off of that, there was a question you brought up before, and probably should've asked it then, but the translation of single-family homes to potential students, the translation of multifamily homes to potential students, I don't understand that. If you could clarify that for us?
Absolutely. And one of the things to realize while all this is happening, there's all...
Could you grab the mic, so if anybody's watching online, they can hear, too?
While that's happening, the rest of the population in the district's declining, so you may see no actual increase. But in fact, we do know that there's students that come out of every housing unit, or at least the potential for that. So, Don stratifies his analysis of housing units into 10 different types of housing, five different types of single-family housing, and now five different, four different types of multifamily housing. Because just saying it's apartment doesn't mean as much as saying that it's a four-story, high amenity, you know, all-two-bedroom, all-one-bedroom type of complex. And so, what he actually does is to evaluate it into one of those 10 categories and assign a student generation rate based on the type of unit it is.
Okay, and I assume you're not gonna show all 10 or nine categories, but if you had to generalize the difference between single-family homes and multifamily, which is kind of a transition we're going through.
Correct.
Can you give us some idea what's going on there?
Well, yeah, actually, I have a pretty good idea, but it used to be that we had, you know, could figure on in this community around .6 or so, .6 to .7 per single-family home. And in the days of traditional multifamily, that was coming in .1, .15. But the thing about that difference is that if you get enough units per acre, you can catch up, and you can get as many students per acre out of, out of multifamily as you did out of single-family. That was the old days. But now, at least all the new multifamily with the rent, well, with rent increases, and then all the new multifamily being built in these high amenity, what do you call it, urban lifestyle complexes, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, starting rents over $2,000, two bedrooms, $2,700, $2,800. And we just, I mean, you look at 300-unit, you know, complex, and you might get 10. So, it's literally like .01 per unit, .03 per unit.
Okay, now, this kind of was, it's roughly half, okay? But you're, I think you're also saying you get more multifamily units on a given area, so is it kind of even out because of that, or...
Well, it, it used to kind of even out because we used to get a lot more families in new multifamily projects. The market for multifamily has gone away from families entirely. So, the occupants in the units, we're just not getting any kids at all.
They don't have kids? Okay, that's where I was trying to get to.
Yeah, and so, a lot of times, you'll see a huge complex and one or two kids in the whole thing.
Okay.
Okay, I have a question for you. So, I'm gonna take Tempe Elementary District. When I first came into the world of schools, it was a growing area. Obviously, then it aged out. When does it age out and then start generating kids again?
That's a really good question. We've been serving Chireen, I've been serving Chireen since 1986, and so, we've had the opportunity to go and look back. We've had the opportunity to do school-age population out of different types of housing units over different decades. And it depends totally on whether it's a, it's a rental community or an owner-occupied community, because the turnover, rate of turnover, the length of tenure in most multifamily or rental places is about three years versus your length of tenure of owners right now, which is sitting at about 17 or 18. So, you're looking at how fast those units are gonna turn over, and of course, no, you never get higher than you do when a subdivision is new. Everybody moves in at the same time, right? And then, from then on, I sell, and then he sells, and then she sells. And it does regenerate, but unevenly, or, you know, not at the same time. And so, you never get back.
But how, how long is that period? But how, how long is that period?
About thirty years.
Good.
Between twenty-five and thirty years. And I've never seen anybody, you know, bounce back. Usually, from the peak to the pit, the first time is a thirty to forty percent decrease in enrollment, and be, before it starts back up again. So the...
So when Lana retires, she'll see the growth, right?
It's something like that. We're all staying in our houses too long, I think that's the, actually, the actual answer. But, and we call it now, you know, they, I started referring to as a house, a locked housing market. Sixty-seven percent of, of homeowners in Phoenix have a mortgage of under four percent. So unless you absolutely have to, you know, you're, you aren't selling your house right now, there's no way you can afford to buy it back. So it's really, you know, put a, an extra set of brakes on the whole, on, on, on the whole thing.
Could I ask a quick question, too?
Sure.
With the cost...
Well, I can't hear you. Did you mic them?
My microphone is on. Does it now work? Okay. With people, with the housing prices and the interest rates going up so dramatically in the last probably four years, five years, we now look at family, people who are younger, how can they afford the housing in this area? And is that, how much is that going to impact our demographics for children in the area because they can't, they can't afford these houses in most cases?
Don's going to give you a little more detail than I will, but in general, you've kind of been a move-up housing market with the growth of Intel and all of the high-tech businesses. You've slowly been pricing people out of this community for years. And what happened was that people were making it work at three percent interest rates, dual incomes, dual good incomes, but then all of a sudden, you get a six percent, seven percent mortgage rate, and you can't anymore. And so you're either not living here, or you're going into like one of the single-family rentals, but then people were finding, don't stay there once they have kids either. And Don is going to talk about prices anyway, so.
In the last year, the green dots indicate the single-family building permits we've had. And you'll see the green single-family has been concentrated pretty much here at Waterston and Belrose, Asher Point. Both of those last two projects are basically completed, or they're finishing. Waterston's still got about three or four more years before it's complete. And then the other single-family is just kind of scattered around here and there, over in Chandler Heights and some of this other area. The multifamily is in the orange dots, concentrated pretty much in the freeway corridor along Arizona Avenue. So this is kind of where we have housing going in. Now, as far as the pricing, Rick was mentioning, that the multiple listing service for the region has got single-family houses, three-bedroom houses, the median last month was about four-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand. For all types of single-family houses, the median price is about four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. This is getting skewed, I think, some by a lot of those large houses up in North Scottsdale and stuff. So you've got a higher price. So if you figure about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the region, for a new single-family house, or a resale single-family house, when we get to the district, we took a look at houses that are actually listed for sale in the district by zip code. And what we were coming up with, the median listing price is closer to five-fifty. So in the region, about four-fifty, in the district, about five-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And that was actually even including townhouses. So the actual number for single-family was probably even higher. But if we get to new houses, like here, and here, and here, you're looking at new pricing somewhere between six-hundred and seven-hundred thousand. And most of the builders that you're going to see in this district, Waterston is TriPoint Home, you know, that's very much a move-up builder. In a while, we're going to be catching over here Legato, and there'll be Pulte and Shea. So again, it's a move-up market. And this is kind of what's happening with the district, you're, it's a move-up market in comparison to the region as a whole. Now, the potential, as we look forward, you know, there's about another twelve, thirteen-thousand, you know, units possible, but you're looking at even higher levels of multifamily as we move forward. And the other thing, we get in here, in this two- or three-year period, here, about half of this, six, seven, eight, about eight hundred single-family houses, close to half of that is going to be at Legato. And over here, we've got about four hundred single-family in the three-to-five-year period, most of that is also going to be at Legato. When we get into the long-term, the five-to-ten-year period, most of that is where we've got it categorized for those two Zinke agricultural parcels. There's a parcel in the north that'll have a yield of somewhere around nine hundred to a thousand lots, and a parcel in the south that would have a total yield of somewhere around fourteen hundred lots. We are expecting probably the northern parcel could possibly go into production maybe towards the end, like eight or ten years, somewhere around in there. That's what we're thinking, because by that time, Waterston's already built out, Legato would be built out, so Zinke, you know, they might move forward. However, if that doesn't happen, this blue bar is going to be down around like this because there's really no other vacant land available. Various ten-acre or fifteen-acre parcels around the district is what would be left. So the future growth, as far as the long-term, is a kind of a wild card because we don't know what is going to happen with those Zinke parcels, whether they're going to develop or not. But that's most of your single-family potential. That would be the north parcel, the south parcel, because Waterston will be built out. Most of this other that we've got over here is this kind of infill where it's building slowly. And if we come in here, in this timing map, red means it's an active subdivision, orange means it's about to become active, and the lighter yellowish colors means that it's, you know, a little farther out. But if you look in the entire map, right here is your, pretty much all of your growth area. Legato over here, they should be building houses here in a couple of years, but Waterston should be building out in about three or four years.
So when you say active, do you mean like they're actually building, I'm sorry, I'm over here. When you say active, are they actually building the houses right now?
We classify active as when they're pulling building permits.
Okay.
So if they're in their grading land, we're watching it, but we don't consider it active yet. When they start pulling permits, putting in foundations, that's what we consider active. So, yeah, there's a lot of activity here in the center section of Waterston, but we don't consider it active yet. And the rest of this, you know, these are just going to be small infill parcels, you're going to keep having those because it's a desirable market. There's a project here where they're going to be building houses pretty soon if they are already, and I just marvel why anybody would build houses there because it's so tight in there next to the freeway. But this is a popular area, but those aren't going to be cheap houses, and there's not going to be very many of them, basically. These are very small parcels.
All right, so of that twelve thousand or so in supply, we're projecting about ten thousand of those get built in the next ten years with occupancy rates that implies about ninety-two hundred or so, ninety-three hundred new households, okay, occupied housing unit. And what I do is stratify those households by those age categories that I showed you earlier. I'm not going to show all that data right now, but it's the stratification of households by age group that leads me to the projections of school-age population. Now, the bold, the 2010 number, the 2020 number, those are census numbers, those aren't my numbers. The other ones are interpolation, basically, between 2010 and 2020, and then our estimates coming forward. But the, the estimates, you know, the projections of per household school-age population is based on that stratification of householders by age and, and tenure. And so even though we're going to add nine thousand household, it would appear that the school-age population is going to fall. Now, notice, I mean, enrollment, school-age population hasn't hardly changed at all recently, doesn't, it's not directly reflective of enrollment because of all of the alternatives. So there's a difference between our school-age population and our enrollment. So we're always tracking that. Well, this is total enrollment, last year, forty-three, three ninety-four by this data. Sixty-one hundred and seven of those came from outside of the district, which means that from inside of the district, we had about thirty-seven thousand, two eighty-seven. So if you, if you look at that, the difference between that and the total school-age population, we, we are about sixteen thousand, four hundred students, school-aged persons who live in the district who do not attend a district school. They could not attend any school, or they do a charter, or ESA, or whatever, they're just not with you. And so that would be sixty-nine point four percent, around seventy percent, service rate of your population. But we look at it two ways because I also look at what I call the total enrollment to population ratio. So if I take my total enrollment and compare it to my school-age population, it tells me the gap between those two is important to me because it tells me how well you're competing. And I'll, I'll give you an example of the District Madison School District, one of the best reputations in the valley. Their, their in-district rate is fifty percent. They only serve half of the kids who live in the district. Their total rate is a hundred percent. They bring in fifty percent of their enrollment from outside of their district, and it brings them up to where their enrollment and their school-age population are the same. That's what you call a reputation, that gap.
But where'd they live, fifty percent?
And we're going to see a little bit of that, how that works for some other districts, too.
So if you're saying it's fifty percent, where'd they go?
They went, in their case, downtown, almost all to private schools.
Okay.
And it's areas of influence, again. Cave Creek struggles with this, Scottsdale struggles with this, because there's just enough people in those populations that can afford to make a choice. And they're, and they have been for, you know, for quite a long time. So...
Rick, and it's probably pretty safe to say in Madison, that's probably a destination for workers, they're going into that location, heading into that.
Has an awful lot to do with it, you know, and in, in, at least it's kind of fading now because Maricopa has grown to the point where it has pretty, pretty good schools and, you know, they're, they're doing a good job for the most part of servicing their population. Originally, everybody was taking their kid in the car, and Tempe Elementary and Chireen were, you know, servicing a, you know, really high share of the, of the new kids in that community, anyway. We see that dropping off. But, yeah, you're absolutely right. So the, the, the problem is, and my complaint, I guess, is that we're pretty good at housing units, we're pretty good at school-age population. It's this how many are you going to serve question that really becomes the most critical item, the most critical part of the calculation. And it's something that, there's, I mean, we look at where kids are coming from, et cetera, but there's no way to predict choice, particularly in a area where the rules, you know, whether it's ESAs or whatever it is, the rules continue to change. You can't do a long-term projection based on an environment that's in constant change.
Yeah, so if I read this, and we had this conversation a couple of months ago, that we don't service sixteen, they go somewhere else, sixteen thousand or so, but we do pick up six...
Right.
For outside, so the net is about ten. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, exactly right.
Okay, and that was kind of the question I was asking before, so, which is bad, but we'd like to have all sixteen, I guess.
We're going to see how, how well, how good you're doing, actually. I mean, you're actually doing very well in, in comparison. So, but it's just, so we're, we're always having to, you know, kind of interpolate that. And that was where essentially most of our error comes in, is really from how many are we going to service. So we look, we usually do this, or try to cover it, by looking at a range of projections, plus or minuses. And so last year, when we issued our projection for this year, minus three forty-eight to, to positive three hundred. My data's a little different than yours because your, mine was three hundred higher last year than yours was, so, but it looks like we're down around six hundred this year, not three hundred.
I think you lost me there, six hundred, three hundred.
Well, it looks like by comparison, when I get this data, last year, enrollment was down by five ninety-eight over the year before, based on the data that I get. And I had projected worst case, this time, it would be minus three forty-eight. And it's not going to be, it's going to be closer to minus six hundred. And it just gets to the point where, one of the issues with charter schools is that the impact of them isn't a nice flat line. When, when, when one opens, you get a big impact. And we had, was it Gilbert Christian Academy opened this year? And we debated that last year in our projection because that was a second campus for them. And sometimes when that happens, they'll just divide the existing kids, we won't get the full impact because some of the kids were already at the other school, but it would appear we didn't benefit from that this time. But, you know, that's really the only thing that we have to point to in terms of, you know, the why the projections would have been...
So I want to make sure I understand this, because when we went into the school year, we were projecting down maybe two hundred or so. And then I think I asked last week, you know, where are we at on that, and we weren't quite sure. Are we seeing that actually reflected in our view on this? Because we know where the kids are. Are we really down six hundred?
We, we are, actually. We, we originally, I mean, you can see it from his trends, like, you know, the, the negative three forty-eight, you know, but even if they had taken stability, it was like only negative twenty-nine. So it, it, that was the report back in June, thinking we would lose between two to four hundred students. That was our thought process when we went into the budget cycle. We're down right now eight hundred students total. We are K through twelve, we are eight hundred students down compared to last year.
Bachelors? Bachelors?
I mean, all right, now, the state shows, I think, sixty-nine thousand as of, I think, last week, when I was on ADE's website, there's sixty-nine thousand students who have applied for an ESA and have been granted an ESA compared to, I think, the nine thousand, or was it?
Forty-nine in twenty-one, twenty-two.
Right, so, so...
And nine thousand the year before that.
Right.
That was, last year was the first big kick.
Right.
And also a big impact is we're graduating large classes based on the demographic pattern trend, and we're bringing in that smaller class. And that's hitting us big time is because the kindergarten rates coming in are much, much drastically reduced than what they have over the last ten years.
Right, but we had been kind of able to hold that because we have a move-up housing market, so people kept moving in with older kids, too. And so we'd been kind of able to hold that margin. But now with housing prices and the lack of affordable housing, it's, it's not going to be able to keep up anymore.
And we don't know, we don't know the impact of ESAs yet. I mean, we will get more data from the state based on that, but we do know that a lot of that ESA funding went to families that are homeschooling already, so they may not have been with us. They are going to private school, students who may not have been with us, they, they're at that private school and now are just drawing that fund. And then there, there are some that probably have affected us at a higher degree than they had in the past just because there's more availability, so.
Right, right now, you can go on to the Arizona Department of Education website, and it is, you can go to ESAs where they show you the number, that's where the, I quoted the sixty-nine thousand, right when you go to their website, you can see the number of ESAs that are applied for and given. As of that day. And you can actually go back to look at third quarter, we can find up to third quarter last year's numbers for Chandler Unified, the people who are within the Chandler Unified School District boundaries who accessed ESA. So, for example, in the third quarter last year, a thousand, I want to say approximately a thousand fifty had accessed ESAs as of the third quarter last year. It's just very difficult, there's not a report out there that shows the student here is now in an ESA or took an ESA, we do not have that data, that data is at ADE and will be for Mr. Horn to present, the superintendent, so I'm hoping that he'll start presenting that data to show schools how many students they lost, you know, from the school district that took an ESA. But right now, there's not a report that shows the students who are at the public schools that are now in the ESAs, is that correct?
That is correct. And I'm expecting, though, that the more affluent districts are going to be where this is happening. Because you can imagine the people who... Because you can imagine the people who were sending their child to private school before were paying the whole bill. And so to them, this is basically just free money. The ones who are moving into charter school with this help would be naturally the ones in the next income category down. The ones who couldn't quite do it before and now they can.
And I agreed somewhere that.
And that's you. That's this area. I'm sorry, Mr. Worth.
I was interrupting, apologize. But I heard somewhere that a lot of charters might be converting over to the voucher?
Well, there's certainly talk, I I happen to know of one who's seriously considering it because there's no reason to go through the, you know, all the hoops with the funding that you always have to do if you can just have the parents all show up with a ticket.
How many, there, so as of eight, seven on the website right now, there's sixty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-three ESAs today. What was the number in from two years ago? Do you know what the number was?
Two years ago it was nine thousand.
Nine thousand, okay, thank you.
Just to kind of finish my original question because we got off on the ESA, you know, off-ramp there. We thought we'd be down about two, three hundred. It looks like we're down about eight hundred, so you're kind of close to what he's saying. When do we get a solid number we can stand on? Is that the forty-day number, a hundred days, or, you know, what's what's the real answer here?
Sure, so we track it every day. We have a Tableau report that we look at every single day. The number that we're at right now is where we're at, we're in current year funding. So the fortieth day gives us a very good um projection of where we'll be at, which is coming up pretty soon. That's why all of our projections are based off of fortieth day. We actually do lose students from the fortieth to the hun- or to all the way to the hundred and eighty days. That's why you see a drop from his number to the last day last year is because then we lost more students last year. And so you'll, we'll always compare fortieth. Remember, our funding is based on day one hundred to uh, one to one hundred. That's how we get an ADM, based on the first day through the hundredth day. You have to be there the whole year to get a full FTE. If you show up on day one hundred and one, you get no money for that fiscal year. If you were there day one through day twenty, you only get twenty percent funding. So that's why our ADM doesn't match our enrollment numbers. But we do, right now, we have the number, we are approximately down eight hundred students. We assume we're going to lose eight hundred students. We thought, again, we.
So my question, is that kind of a stable number as of now?
As of now, yes.
We're not really expecting it to go up or down much after this.
It went down slightly from the very first day of school. So we we always wait for the first day. Actually, it was, we have all the students returning from the previous year and then those students who don't come back to school, we have to drop those off because after ten days. So it was really important for us to get through the first two weeks of school because we don't know all the students, if they're actually coming back or they are just late. They were on vacation or they were at a tournament or if they were seeing grandparents out of the country, where they were at. So that first ten days, we can't drop them until we know that they're not with us. So then after ten days, we drop them out of the system if they aren't here. And Dr. Gilbert, is there anything else with that that you can think of on that? So ten days.
So eight hundred is a good number.
Yes, and now we're in.
Trying to get at here.
We're in the third week of school. So now we have those, we feel comfortable with our numbers now being in the third week of school.
Important to note, of that of that difference, two hundred was in kindergarten alone.
Yeah. But important to note too.
Of the difference, of two hundred of the eight hundred difference we're looking at is all kindergarten.
But inconsistency patterns before, um, it was easy to project off of eightieth day and hundredth day. They pretty much were stabilized in the district for many times. Now at the eightieth day and the hundredth day, we not we not only have to use our demographers' report much more based on demographic isolations, but when Dr. Gilbert's doing his staffing pieces, he has to also project the decline of what's not coming up or what's not out there anymore. And and pretty much before, and we've, we did this for years, our hundredth day, you you almost were kind of certain that you'd be around that hundredth day population, give or take a little bit of growth, maybe a little bit, a little bit of of um decline. But now it's different, right? With open enrollments, ESAs, um, all of that, as well as the lower birth rates and the high, high interest rates which people aren't moving, it's just harder to predict those pieces going into the next year. And that's why we have to use the, these numbers a little more, a little more cautiously based on not overshooting the growth because it's just not there. If the kids aren't there, the growth pattern's not gonna be there.
So can I summarize? The reality is this is what we knew was coming. It was just when it was gonna come and that's why we built this surface. Can't stress that enough. And it was inevitable to happen and this is gonna help us get through these awful years. Can't stress that enough.
Yeah. Let's go, let's see, let's go through, we're really running out of time and I don't know. Projections get done by attendance area, which is, which is based on, you know, where kids live, which isn't what they want to know. They want to know where they're gonna go to school. And you'll see in the report when you get it, if you review it, we look at that relationship of where kids live versus where they go to school. So there's a lot of, you know, that goes into doing these projections. Again, if it's blue, it's small and getting smaller, it's getting darker blue. So we're looking particularly for schools that are growing or shrinking. And we're gonna be ended up, just like all the other districts I worked for, eventually we're gonna be looking at the ones that are shrinking too small to be economical. Let's just go to the conclusion slide.
So wait a second, okay. Galveston, okay. We about spent thirty million dollars rebuilding that school. Okay, capacity's about seven fifty. We're not getting above a enrollment of five hundred. There's absolutely no growth in that area, no construction, no, nothing to indicate we can fill up that school. Okay, and this isn't a really question for you, is it? I'm really starting to wonder why we're doing this. Is it, it doesn't seem to be a business case for it. It might just be a sentimental case, it's an old school, we want to take care of the kids, the family, the neighborhood. I get that. But thirty million dollars, based on our hope that we might get kids in there when every indication is that we won't, really leads to some difficult questions.
It's not a declining area. It's a pretty solid area. And I guess the only thing, and I'll let him really answer the real question, but one of the things is that if we don't maintain high-quality schools, and the perception is that we're competitive with the bright and shiny's, then we're going to lose not only this advantage that we, relative advantage we have in our capture rate in this district, we'll also be less appealing to those sixty-one hundred students that we're getting from outside of the district. So sometimes, you know, the investment is just to, is just to remain competitive.
Galveston's a neighborhood school, okay? We don't pull kids from out of the district to go to Galveston. They go to other schools, okay? And if you look at your own data, it shows that we pull most of the kids from the neighborhood. I think we're pulling just about everything we possibly can into Galveston. I'm just not seeing where the other two hundred and fifty kids, the fifty percent enrollment increase is coming from.
Yeah. No, I understand. Uh, Mr. Worth, I'll let you go, then I'll, I'll answer.
Well, I did want to explore a little bit more about um the comments about Galveston because what we know and we learned tonight, we know that our most loyal student population on the family level is our low SES communities, which is Galveston. And if we look at trends statewide, I would like to ask, we do know what demographic in the state is growing. Can you answer that?
Well, right now, the people who are moving to Phoenix are more affluent than the people who are already here.
So we have transplants, but we do, we do know that on the state level, it's our Latino population that is continuing to grow.
That's correct.
So I I think it would be incorrect to say that we know that Galveston won't continue to carry a student population.
We're actually showing a mild increase in in that community.
And also, um, the why Galveston? Well, it it isn't at its capacity. There's a lot of expansion that can be done there. We did have some, a charter movement pull some students from that neighborhood based on the bright and shiny school. We believe that that area, Galveston area is an interesting area and you have to have been around for a long time to know it. In recession times, that neighborhood just expands like a sponge in water based on the fact that a lot of individuals go back to single-family homes there, generational homes, and they live with families. So our enrollments there in in hard times actually increase substantially. And so we've seen that pattern over time. In addition, uh, when you look at where homes are gonna be affordable, it's going to be in two-two-four, two-two-five. That's where our homes are gonna be affordable for individuals to go to. So we want to make an option there for capture rate, that our families have dignified school that that actually can get internet service and 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 have the services that we've provided. All of our schools on the south and and north side, as we've built and rapidly built over time, our schools are are really nice on that side, but they 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 are, they don't keep up with the with the charters that build the shiny new places. In addition, if we were to look at, and we've looked at this out, if we have to reduce or repurpose a school, Galveston would be the population or the school that we probably would look at a lot of that enrollment going to because it has a a higher potential to be able to have those students come in with the property that's there, et cetera. So if there were schools around it that needed to at some point be repurposed, uh, that that property will be a great investment. In addition, we worked with the city closely. They've made a large investment in that area, as we're gonna see when we meet with the city. But we've worked parallel with them too in that specific area that they were making the investments in roadways, lit patterns, lighting patterns, parks. So also for uh low-cost housing in the area, uh, which will also be a benefit to that location as well.
Okay, so you're arguing that his projections are wrong, are you? That you think they're gonna grow.
I'm not arguing anything at all that his projections are wrong. I think his projections have been on for many years.
I think you were trying to tell me that we could get a lot more students there and I'm not, I'm just not seeing it.
Well, well, based on those things, if we repurpose a school, you have more students that need to go there. If we pull back from kids that went to charter schools and never arrived at Galveston, you can have more potential students there. His demographic report shows that there can be more students there just in that area. But then also, when you look at houses that may be available to move in, more students could be there based on those being affordable houses. Those houses aren't going for the six hundred thousand.
But that's not what they're telling us.
The the houses that exist already.
That's not the projection that they're making for us. I mean, you understand that, right?
If I, if if people are looking for low and affordable housing, the city's developing in that area, low and affordable housing. But also if those houses come on the market, those are gonna be your lower-priced homes in the Chandler area, which will attract families.
So you're saying the projections are not correct then because of that? I mean, they're saying something completely different than what you're presenting.
No, I I do believe that all the projections, we use our projections, we have been for two decades. I think that the one thing that we did when, if you're talking about how we built Galveston, we have built Galveston larger than it is right now for the purpose of originally San Marcos, potentially. If that campus were to have closed, then that would facilitate the students at Galveston Elementary would be able to take on the San Marcos population also. That's part of that piece too. So if we know we need to close a campus, we have the ability to move those students to a campus also. They have the ability and have a seat for those students. So we built that campus with the ability that if we need to shift students or as a school closes, we have the ability to do that. That was our projection of building that, if that's, if that's the kind of question you're asking.
Okay, so I guess that kind of leads to the conclusion that when we make those decisions, we should go ahead with the reconstruction, spend the thirty million. And right now, maybe we need to put that on hold until we understand this better. This is, this is a whole lot of money.
The reason we are rebuilding Galveston, it's one of our oldest schools that actually needs to be rebuilt. There's a, there's other reasons. It's not related to um the demographic report. It's related to how old are, actually Hartford is older. It is the school that is older than Galveston, but at this time it was, um, we have a harder time building on Hartford's campus. It's a smaller campus where Galveston, we could actually build on Galveston's campus at the same time that we were constructing it. Both schools need to be rebuilt. They are in need of being torn down and rebuilt.
I understand what we want to do, but what do we need to do? And if we can't fill that school up, if we can't fill that school up, we probably shouldn't be doing this.
So Kurt, I have a, I have a point that may move us along a little bit better. The the time to have the discussion about Galveston is like two years ago. So that ship has sailed. We're, we're, we're doing, I mean, it's, it's in process, you know?
We can always put it on hold, I mean, it's not wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
Putting on the second nine million tonight, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not saying cancel it, okay? But maybe we just need to step back a little bit.
I guess during my career, they've rebuilt restrooms in that school four times. Are we gonna keep doing that? That's making sense.
I I would argue that we owe reinvestment into the most vulnerable communities because the most vulnerable communities have need to have the same options, the same choices in the twenty-first century that all of our other schools have. These schools do not have that and these communities need our investment. They need the city, they need the school district to be investing in the community so that we have a higher uh, a higher thought process of how our students can can progress in those areas. And I guarantee you, there will be students that come to things when you reinvest in those areas, they they will come alive, just like downtown did. When downtown in nineteen ninety-six was was all boarded up, there was people that just walked through downtown. Look at downtown Chandler now. With the reinvestments they made, it is a destination. We want our schools to be the same way. We don't want them to walk right by them because they're seventy-five years old and don't have the same opportunities as other parts of our district. So I think all kids need that access and I think it's a great, I think it's a great investment.
You don't have the kids to pay this off. I mean, that's, you know, it's solely a business. I understand all your other arguments, but solely a business decision, you don't have the kids to pay this. Anyway, that's. Unless Patty.
Oh, I just wanted to echo Superintendent Arducci's comments that I do expect there to be a return on investment and in itself will have promotional value with us bringing in kids into CUSD. This is going to be an innovative school that will take a lot of pride in promoting and I think it will be worthwhile. But I do want to move us forward with tonight's program since this is a, an approved decision that we're moving forward with and um we can continue to learn more about demographics and closeout, I think.
Yes, that, thank you very much, Patty. We do need to stay away from discussing things that aren't on the agenda in the wrong spots.
Okay, um, I guess, I'm just gonna go, all we have is our, our conclusion slides. So um, I'll build on to what Mr. Worth said, I suppose, in terms of conclusions. But um, all, all things indicate that we're likely to have enrollment declines over the next two years, even though, you know, twelve, ten to twelve thousand housing units are gonna be added. The demographics are just, you know, stacked up that way right now and there's really nothing that we could do about that. The population itself, you know, we saw it showing some, now some significant sign of aging, that turnover not keeping up. You know, the populations in the oldest categories are the ones that are growing now. And at least through this projection period, that's the way it's going to be. Doesn't mean it'll always be that way, and to Mr. Worth's point, there are times, uh, I recall the Creighton School District in downtown Phoenix, where built in the fifties, they had X number of schools. The original population moved out, they sold half of their school sites. And the next wave of population came in that had larger families and all of a sudden, they needed school space and they were paying commercial prices to buy land and they were building two-story schools and those kinds of things. So it can happen. But um, the level of turnover in this district is very, very low as is the la, as is the availability of of affordable housing. So those are gonna continue to work against us. We talked about being impacted by choice. And kind of frustrating for me because I thought in most areas, we'd kind of gotten a handle on the impact of charters. And in your district and a lot of other established areas, they had kind of saturated themselves. If they'd opened another one, they'd have been cannibalizing, cannibalizing themselves. So we kind of had that under control. And now the ESAs give us a whole nother thing to get a handle on. How big's it gonna get? Is it gonna get capped? And that's why those, these projections are so, you know, difficult to do because we don't know what the environment's gonna be, that that's gonna exist. And I think the the last one is that even with the challenges, this is great. The district is still serving over forty-three thousand students. You have extremely high-quality programs, athletic programs. You track large numbers from outside of the district. And you have been, in the last twenty years, very strategic about how to place schools and and how to serve students so that you maintain a decent share. And this day, this date is a couple of years old, but it just kind of gives you an idea what that looks like in in modern times. So Chandler Unified School District, two years ago, was serving, had that total population ratio. So total enrollment divided by school age population, eighty-four percent. Served seventy-three percent in district. That was the highest percentage of all the big unified districts um in the, in the county. So everybody's trying to cope with the same situation and you guys, in fact, have done very well at coping with that situation. And there are some interesting things. I mean, Peoria has been real solid. Some of these are hired because of their geography. Silent Mountain, I, I, you know, it's a real small district, obviously. Well, they service a real high percent because they're so far out there. It's too far to the next school. There's different reasons. Then you get into the group here, it includes Gilbert, Scottsdale, Dear. Then you get into the group here, includes Gilbert Scottsdale, Deer Valley, and Paradise Valley. These are all pretty solid districts. They're all hotbeds for charters. Every one of them has been dramatically impacted, even more than you have. Queen Creek is lower, but it's because they got a late start. When growth started to occur in Queen Creek, SFP didn't have any money. And so guess who moved in to serve everybody? The charters. And so they got behind the curve. They've caught up a lot. Actually, their rates are the one, the few, you know, capture rates are one of the few in the entire area that's actually increasing, but they got off to a slower start. Maricopa, we talked about that, starting off pretty low but increasing because originally everybody took their car, their kid in the car, and they took off to Chandler and Tempe. So, but, you know, like I said, and then, you know, poor jail comes in his position there. But as far as it goes, you're dealing with it as well as anyone.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We have a presentation by Dr. Fletcher, and then we have a hard start at 7 o'clock for our next meeting. Does anybody have any questions they need to get answered urgently about demographics?
I just have a quick suggestion. I noticed the file is named Ball's School District.
Oh, that's just in the, yeah, that's just in that, there's a, yeah, a setting internal to the file where you only see it when you print it to a PDF. So I apologize. I assure you, it's not Ball State. But thank you for pointing that out.
Anybody else? Great, thank you.
No, I just want to thank you, and thank you for helping us with projections that have helped us remain with these numbers. I think over the years, we have grown to really use the data that you bring us. And I know we have further meetings going on to help and assist as we're making moves forward. So we want to thank you for how responsive you've been to us.
And the report is standing draft right now on purpose.
Yeah.
So we'll incorporate this year's data in it before we make a final. So to give you some.
Well, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
All right. We'll take a, take a moment and let Dr. Fletcher get started.
Dr. Fletcher, while you're getting ready, if I could just introduce this to the board, this is our review of metrics with some recommendations that Dr. Fletcher and her team are making as we move forward. If we do not get to all of the conversation you need today, we can schedule some time on the August 25th planning session. So just wanted to make sure you know if the time gets a little tight before the board meeting, we can provide more time. Dr. Fletcher?
I didn't know if you wanted me to wait for Vice President Mazin or are you?
Sorry, let's wait for just a couple moments.
Does anybody need water?
Kurt? Good.
Water? Patty? You need water? I'm going to get some.
Oh, and sir, I saw you taking a picture of the presentation earlier. That's all on the board docs if you want the whole thing, so.
Tonight, we are going to discuss our board achievement goals for 2324 school year. Again, as Superintendent Narducci mentioned, we're going to review and revise. Hopefully, this is a quicker refresh since I just did board metrics, board achievement goals, what was that, two months ago? So if it's going too slow, feel free to move me along, but given the time, I am going to run through it rather rapidly. Suggestions or ideas, again, if you have them, we can stop in the moment, and I will take notes. And then, as Superintendent Narducci mentioned, we can continue the conversation at the planning session. As a reminder, your first equity board goal slides, three, four, and five, kind of, for those of you, I gave you a paper copy. It's easy to have all three outside by side, right? This is the high-level overview of our board goal one, which is equity in our student perceptions, achievement, and access, right? It looks at student climate survey, discipline, advanced programs, assessment, ELA, and math results on AAS, college-ready on ACT, and graduation rates. As you know, on here, our rubric doesn't mean a whole lot because it is an average of all of our subgroups, right? So you can find your subgroups on slide five. Those are the ones we report. They are required by state and federal law. And then on slide four is the underlying data, which has a little bit more meaning for all of us. So 1A, we look at the climate survey. 80% of our students agree or strongly agree that we have a positive climate and disposition in their school. 1B, school discipline events per capita are below .1 for our students. And again, remember, this is done by every subgroup. We take the total for each subgroup, and we average them.
Quick question about, just to make sure I'm reading this right. So if I'm, if I'm trying to see where we're at, what, where are we? There's no.
We're nowhere yet. This is just the beginning.
Okay. That was the confusing part.
Okay, no problem. We review them at the beginning, so you're going to approve them for the upcoming year, and then I'll give you final data as we get closer. Okay? So 1C is our enrollment rates in advanced programs, looking to be at least 25 and 1/2% per subgroup. 1D is our proficiency on our statewide assessment, AAS. So we're looking at ELA and math scores, at least 60% proficient and higher. Or if you recall, we look at, is there an increase from the prior year? So we're allowing our subgroups to grow. 1E is we ask that at least 40% of our students are college-ready on three of the four ACT exams. And then 1F is graduation rates. We look at a threshold of 93%, or again, comparing to prior year, that a subgroup is growing on graduation rate. So the important piece here is there are no changes being proposed to board metric number one.
Just so I understand this, I'm kind of confused like Jason is. So when it says, let's just, very last one there, graduation rates 93%, rubric score is greater than 3.0, just means you made the 93? I mean, how do you get three points out of, off of that?
So that, that is why, that's just the average of all the subgroups. So that's why if you look at the next slide, slide four, a four is if you are at 93% or greater, or you improved from the prior year, you can earn a four. So what we do is we take a four for each subgroup, assuming everyone got a four, and then we average that. So that's why I give you the second set of slides, because the first slide doesn't mean a whole lot numerically.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Board goal two, grade level proficiency. Nothing is highlighted here, so highlights are your indicator of changes. Oh, and even there's, there is a change. You should see on your copy, I'm not sure why it's not pulling up on here, school city should be changed to Renaissance, so I'll mention that here in a moment. So 2A is students at all grade levels will exceed the state in AAS and ACT scores in ELA and math. So we still have that same expectation. 2B is our growth on our internal district benchmark data. So that is growth from beginning of the year to end of the year. So that is Renaissance and DIBELS. And again, we changed to Renaissance this year, but we don't expect anything different on growth of our students. We still expect the same level or greater of growth. So 2A, just important for all of you to know, is a prior year, right? Because it is a statewide assessment data point. 2B, the reason we have that in there is because we can do current year on our in-district data. So it helps us balance leading versus lagging indicators. Board goal three is students in third grade reading at grade level. So 2, 3A, excuse me, is the percent of third grade students performing at grade level in ELA, defined by proficient or highly proficient, based on the law. And then again, similar to 2B, 3B is based on growth on the in-district assessment, so growth from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. And again, that is Renaissance and DIBELS data. All right. Board goal four is our indicators for college and career readiness. Scholarship dollars is the first indicator. There's no change there. There is a change, hence the bright, bold highlight, to our service learning hours. If you recall, last June, thus was last year, 2223 was the first year we collected service learning hours post-COVID, and we had a 2.4 hours average per student. Okay? To earn a four, in prior years, we needed at least 5.5 credit hours per, service learning hours per student, right? So we only have one year of data. We don't want to request that we just keep putting the metric off. So what you'll see here is a proposal for an improvement rubric, in essence. Okay, so below 2.5 is a one. Last year, we were 2.4. So we expect to grow and improve our service learning hours this year. The difficulty of this is I only have one year of data, so I don't know at what level we will grow. All right? So you'll see, we propose essentially a half hour per increment. So 2.5 to 2.99 would result in a two. 3 to 3.49 would result in a three, and if we get to at least 3.5 hours per student, we will be a four, with our intent to be that as we collect more data and we stabilize, we start increasing the increments year over year to return back to that 5.5 credits. Okay? There's a lot of factors happening here. We still don't know the impact COVID has had, right, on allowing students back into the community. We're working on better data collection points. This predominantly has been a secondary-focused, right, college and career readiness indicator, but we do have a lot of our K6 schools engaging in service learning. So we want to look at how do we incorporate K through 12 potentially in our indicator? We've also talked about exploring other workforce indicators. So there's a couple elements happening here that we're hoping the rubric works, but again, I only have one year of data.
Our Chandler, well, that's loud. Our Chandler Education Foundation service learning hours counted in this, or they coming back?
Yep.
Okay.
So that is the proposal at this time for service learning hours. Okay? 4C will remain the same scholar, National Merit and Flynn Scholars of at least 40. Advanced placement tests, again, will remain the same, looking to exceed 7,413. If you recall, last year, we did not make that. It's the second year post-COVID that we haven't made that, so there's the hope that we return to that number this year. 4E is our performance on that AP placement test of at least three, four, or five, greater than 60% of our students doing that. Yeah?
With our population of students decreasing slightly, are we looking at perhaps a more of a percentage rather than a raw number like we're looking at for the number of placement tests? Or, because I think that that would not be technically sustainable for a while. We might get to a point where we don't have enough students to even get that number of tests.
Absolutely, and I think we're going to collect another, this years of data, and then kind of can see where we're at proportionally, and we'll probably have to revisit that as we move forward. It's a great idea.
Yeah, but we're really not having problems at the AP level, which is high school, so.
It is, but if we.
I understand your point, but.
But we are starting to, as you noticed, we are starting to hit that peak, and from our demographic survey, we're going to be starting to decline a bit.
This is still a continuation of board goal four. So F, G, H, and I are all performance on the ACT, right, in the four subject areas, math, English, reading, and science. So we look to be higher than all states who are testing at least 85% of their population. International Baccalaureate, we look at the number of IB exams taken, as well as how they perform on it, so similar to our AP testing. So we may have to do something similar with that, Vice President Mazin, as we review numbers, enrollment numbers. 4K is our dual credit hours, looking to exceed 22,000. And then 4, oh, that's, and man, we're off tonight on our typos. 4L, CTE, is our percent of high school placements out of our senior concentrator that will be at more above 80%. Again, minimal changes to four. The only one would be that B, service learning hours proposal. Board goal five is our student dropout rate. So the dropout rate A is going to continue to look at us compared to the state dropout rate. So we want to be at least 2 and 1/2 percentage points below the state dropout rate. And then 5B is the one we really need to explore. So if you recall, chronic absence data has been trending ugly, should leave it at that. Okay? Last year, we were around 20% of chronic students' absence. Absent in the past historically, before COVID, to earn a four, we had to be less than 8%. And we were. So we went from a less than 8% to a 30% in 2122, a 20% in 2223, and we still are kind of in an unknown space. So with that, knowing that we were 20% last year, again, we want to improve from that. So anything at or above 20% is a one. Okay? And then we only have two years of data, so it's hard to make a trend on two years of data, but we're going to say that if we reduce that by 5%, we will earn a two. If we reduce it by 10%, we will earn a three, and anything greater than that will earn us a four. Obviously, the goal here is to get back to a less than 8% chronic absence rate. Board goal six is graduation rate. So 6A is our standard graduation rate that we've used. Again, similar to dropout rate, where we compare our graduation rate to the state's graduation rate, and we want to have a 14 percentage point difference with us being higher than the state. 4B is the percentage of ninth-grade students who attain 5 and 1/2 credits during their first year of enrollment in high school. Now, if you recall, this is one we have struggled with. We are not, just to be clear, we're not making a proposal to change it because we have struggled with it. But one of the things we realized in our analyzing of the data and trying to extrapolate what's happening is that when I report in June on 5 and 1/2 credit hours, we're actually cutting off the summer school session. So we don't have an entire year's worth of data on our students because our students who take summer school, their credits that they earn during summer are not being counted in our data because we have to report in June. So we would like to propose that this shift to a prior year metric, because then we truly can look at the students' full year of coursework that includes summer school. This is the exact reason why grad rate is always a lagging indicator by a prior year because students have the ability to graduate through the summer. Okay? It'll just help us to have a more clear picture of what's really going on so we can dig into the data to help resolve the issues. Plus, we also want to know how successful summer school is for our students. Board goal seven is market share. So our student charter school mobility rate will not exceed 2 and 1/2%. Remember, Roarz, you had asked me in June what our response rate was like on that? So I did some digging for you. We have roughly 1% of students who withdraw from us, that we do not know where they go. And what we actually do is we include those students in the numerator and the denominator. So essentially, we assume the worst, that we didn't hear from them, they didn't tell us where they went, they must be going to a charter. So we don't exclude the data we don't have, we hold it against ourselves. But there is 1% of students we don't know where they go. Board goal eight is employer of choice, as measured by our certified employee retention rate of at least 90% for a four. Board goal nine is district of choice, as measured by a letter grade that parents assign on our West Group survey. We look for at least 90% to give us an A or a B. Board goal 10 is dollars spent in the classroom, so we consistently look to be in the top 10% of all districts. Board goal 11 is outside contributions. The numbers are in blue simply because I've updated against this current year's MNO budget. Board goal 12 is communication with the community. Board goal 12 is communication with the community. So again, we look for an 85% response rate from our community on an A or a B with respect to communication from our West Group survey. And what ideas do you have?
I have a question. Going back to that ninth-grade students getting 5.5 hours, you're not going to know for, you're not going to know for a while before you, or a little bit longer before you get that. So it's harder to do something if it's farther down the road, right?
Yeah, having it, having a report in June means we collect the data before summer school has even begun, right? So giving us, making it a prior-year indicator gives us the ability to capture all of that summer school credits and to see how our students have approved. So for example, when we looked at Chandler High School, we saw that from end of year through summer school, they had over 25% of their students now made their credits and would meet the threshold. So we thought that was an important indicator to include summer school, so we have an accurate representation of our students meeting their credits.
And this indicator, is it more of an indication of how well the junior highs are doing at preparing people to be ready for high school?
To some extent. But you have to remember, we have students who, all of those students that we get back or begin with us starting in ninth grade that have come from charters potentially, that we now have to analyze and determine where they're at.
Mr. John Olive, I think another one of the, that metric also was put in to really help with graduation rates, because we had a lot of students that were not getting enough credit hours in their freshman year, so that they were starting very, very far behind. And they were never going to catch up when they only had, you know, didn't have enough credit hours in order to graduate.
Okay.
So they were, I think we were trying to make sure that we were metering it out for the four years, so that if they did get 5.5 credit hours their freshman year, and continued on, that they would still have enough credit hours to graduate in the four years.
That makes sense. That's all the questions I had.
Can I actually add something to that? I think what's also real important is the studies will show you that if students aren't successful in their ninth-grade year, there's a bigger chance that they're going to drop out. So the focus is, in our district, you should be completing six credits by the end of your freshman year. So making sure that we can front-load and make sure that we're helping students and using the summer to intervene will help those students stay on track, so they don't end up dropping out later on.
Why do we have a problem with this, do you think?
I'm sorry, what's your question?
So why do we have, do you think we have a problem with this?
I don't know that I would say we have a.
It's the same thing at freshman year in college, too.
Yeah, I don't know that, I don't know that I would say it's a problem. I think it's the trend. You're coming into high school, you're taking classes, you're rotating, you're taking, you know, just the load of moving from junior high to high school in itself is a transition for students. And so in the studies across the country, the struggle of going into a freshman year, which probably be going into a first year of college, is just a struggle. So you're trying to put some things in place in order to help them understand how to cope and using their skills, so that at the end of their freshman years, it doesn't become the burden to where they think it's just so hard to keep going. So you're just trying to make sure you help them out.
So a typical load is six credits, six classes, right?
Yes.
So you're saying five and a half, that means, well, they actually can't fail one.
Well, what they, it could be that they fell a semester, but the goal is.
All fail semester.
Yeah, it could be that they fell a semester. But ultimately, when you're looking at those credits, you can recover, you know, a semester, you're going to summer school, it's those type of things. So the hope is that when you start your sophomore year, you're not so far behind that you feel that it's insurmountable.
And it won't happen again, because now they've acclimated to it.
Yeah, the hope, the hope is that.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ronna.
Yeah, related, I understand the conceptualization of wanting to capture the post, because really what we're looking at is the post-summer of the academic year, I think. And in this case, we're trying to catch our kids up, and we want to include that in the report. But what about capturing the kids who take summer course to, in effect, get ahead? So I'm just wondering, is our annual report going to carry the true summer academic credits as well as the post? Or can you explain that a little bit better?
So it's an average by students, right? So it will include students who are moving ahead, combined with those who are trying to simply catch up. But we can explore extrapolating it. So we're solely focusing on those summer kids that needed to catch up.
Yeah, I think that would describe what our goal is a little bit better.
They would be, Ms. Ronna, they would be captured in the data based on the fact that it would be a transcripted course for the ninth grade. So those students that take a transcripted course that's approved by a highly qualified instructor will be in that data if they take it before their ninth-grade year. And then the change we're doing is we're trying to catch all of the kids who create those opportunities in the summer after, which we didn't do before. So we kind of held it off when we had to do the report for the, so all of those kids post-ninth grade and after, well, their ninth grade really doesn't, their 10th-grade year really doesn't start until the next academic year, we'll be capturing both those kids. So if they're transcripted in the summer before their ninth-grade year, it will capture those, and it'll capture those that do some makeup work in there before they start their 10th-grade year.
So it would be both summers?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and really quickly, I also just want, with some grace on future reporting, COVID is still here. So, you know, I just fear that we are still trying to think that we're going to gain the momentum as if COVID didn't exist, but acknowledging that it certainly is here. We are seeing a surge, as we typically do with the summer and travel. So giving us that grace as we continue to look through these reports.
That's a fair point. And the improvement rubrics that we put on in the blue, I mean, we may come back at the end of the year, and I may show you data that says we have to reevaluate because it didn't play out the way we anticipated.
All right, thank you. If anybody else doesn't have any questions, then we can take a break before our next meeting then. Thank you very much, Dr. Fletcher.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher.